I'd like to welcome everybody to our March Board Meeting, March 19th, 2024. Time is seven o'clock. We have a quorum of seven members present. And we will start with our recognitions from the kids from Creekview and Spring Creek, right after I finish this little scheduled memo. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We've all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action, so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district. We thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Creekview and Spring Creek, come on up.
I'm Mindy Chapa, the principal of Spring Creek, and I have two amazing Cardinals here. I have Mr. Preston. We have Preston, and we have Carson. And they're going to go ahead and tell you a little bit about what makes Spring Creek so special.
My favorite part of Spring Creek is how everybody is welcoming. Last year I was a new student, and by now, almost everybody in the fourth grade knows me.
One thing I like about Spring Creek is that they recognize good behavior. For example, each week on Friday, you can get a Cardinal compliment for good behavior during the week. And every nine weeks, you can get the High Flyer or Cardinal with Character for being good during the nine weeks.
And I'm Mike McKeever. I'm the principal at Creekview Elementary, and I have two wonderful Gators here, a fourth grader and a third grader, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves to you.
I'm Maria Phillip. I represent Creekview Elementary. And my favorite part about school is that my teachers are kind and supportive, and I have some really great friends. I am a drummer, and I'm also a vocalist. A lot of my hobbies are, I enjoy rollerblade, and I also love to read. My favorite subject is math, and that's mostly about me.
My name is Johnny Adams, and my favorite thing about Creekview Elementary is that my teachers are always so welcoming and putting a smile to my face. And my favorite subject is reading and math.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please stay standing for the moment of silence.
You may be seated.
Now, we have the distinct pleasure of recognizing some wonderful teachers here at Creekview. So if you could come up here, Ms. Stahl, Ms. Edwards, and Ms. Garcia, we would love to recognize you here. And I told Ms. Edwards that I would not embarrass her because my kindergartner is in her class, and she has plenty of things to say about me from him, and so I don't want to be embarrassed. So each one of these ladies mean a tremendous amount to our campus. They serve on our guiding coalition, and so when we look at improving learning outcomes for all of our kids, these teachers really are at the front of that work. And so each one of them, I have a little bit of things to say, but each one of them is reflective, shows amazing student growth. So we'll start with Ms. Amber Edwards. She's a kindergarten teacher. One of the greatest things that she has about her classroom is that they are a classroom family. Couldn't ask for a better first experience for a kid in school. It's so fun. The kids just love each other. I just have to, it's moving because my kid's in there, and she just loves him so well. So thank you.
Next up, we have Brooke Stahl.
Brooke is always quick to act, so if I ever need anything done, she's got it, and she is moving quick and ready to go. She always looks for growth opportunities in herself, and so really appreciate that. You're always looking at how you can be better. Both her and Amber both were resident hosts, and so they're helping mentor the next generation of teachers, so thank you for that. And then next up, we have Laura Garcia. She's a third-grade teacher, teaching math. She's great at teaching math and making it fun. She loves instruction. Her kids really are fruitful in their growth. She leads our campus every year in growth, her and her partner. So she's a great teammate, always evaluating how to be better. And what I really like about your classes, when I go in, your kids are learning math, how it applies in real life. So thank you. Amanda, I just wanted to recognize you. You got anything you want to add?
I've actually had the chance for all three of these ladies to talk to my children, and so I can echo not only as a colleague, but as a parent, knowing that my kid was seen and heard was probably one of the most amazing things for them to go through, so.
So now we're going to really honor and recognize our Spring Creek teachers. I have chosen three of our amazing castle teachers. Ms. Rachel Harris, come on up. Ms. Wendy Gunder and Ms. Ashley Wolf, come on up. These three ladies are the most, one of the three hardest-working teachers at our school. They work tirelessly and work well past their school hours to make sure our students are given everything they need to be successful in the classroom. I can't speak enough about them. They are incredible human beings, and I'm so thankful you're part of our Spring Creek family. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Horak, members of the board, Dr. Harkrider. It's a privilege, as always, to be here to recognize some of our incredibly talented and hard-working and dedicated students who have competed at the highest levels in their athletics or fine arts or CTE programs. Tonight, we'll be recognizing our athletes who participated in the state wrestling championships in February, as well as our athletes who participated in the state swimming and diving championships in February as well. We'll start with wrestling. Five CSISD wrestlers and three alternates traveled to Cyprus on February 16th and 17th for the UIL Class 5A Wrestling State Championships. The tournament hosts more than 400 coaches, 600 athletes, and 5,000 spectators. A&amp;M Consolidated freshman Landry Von Gotten brought home the gold for the Tigers as the 5A Girls 132-pound state championship. And four of our boys competed. Yeah, give her a hand. And four of our boys competed through the second round of the consolation bracket, so well done. We're extremely proud of these athletes for advancing to the state tournament and for our coaches, who inspire greatness in all of our student athletes to achieve success. So students, when I call your name, if you'll come around to Dr. Harkrider and receive your certificate, and make your rounds to the board, shake their hands, and then just wait over here off to the side counted by me, and we'll take a group photo after the fact. So from College Station High School, John Humphries. A&amp;M Consolidated, Royale Marquez Rocha. College Station High School, Jack Murphy. From A&amp;M Consolidated High School, our state championship winner, Landry Von Gotten. From A&amp;M Consolidated, Brianna Young. A&amp;M Consolidated, Alex Gonzalez. All right. We'll continue our recognitions with our swimmers and divers. Seventeen athletes from A&amp;M Consolidated High School competed in the UIL State Swimming and Diving Championships, held February 23rd and 24th in Austin. We had Tiger swimmers earn bronze medals in two events and placed in the top 25 in 19 other events. Tiger freshman Brooklyn Poole earned third place in 100-yard breaststroke, and junior Catherine Rasmussen, senior Sam Poole, senior Sammy Shankar, and senior Mackenzie O'Donnell placed third in the 200-yard medley relay. Again, we're very proud of these athletes for reaching the state championships this year and congratulate them on this great accomplishment. Athletes, I call your name if you'll do the same and come receive your certificate from Dr. Harkrider, shake the board member's hands, and then wait off to the side. We'll get a picture. Mackenzie O'Donnell. Brooklyn Poole. Sam Poole. Catherine Rasmussen. And we had some swimmers who couldn't be here tonight. Am I missing one in the back there, Coach? Is it Edward Yang? All right, Edward Yang, everybody. Sir? Oh, Neil Pang. Sorry, Neil Pang. All right. Our other swimmers who couldn't be here tonight, they had club swim tonight. Annie Dent, Ariana Larson, Eve Nelson, Sammy Shankar, and Edward Yang. Let's give them a hand. That concludes our student recognitions portion for tonight.
All right. That'll bring us to item C4. We'd like to recognize the artwork at the back of the boardroom from the kids from Creekview and Spring Creek. So we've got some talented artists. Every month that we like to make sure we highlight, so great things going on in our art classes. Bring side M1, board reports. Who'd like to go first?
I attended the Intergovernmental Committee meeting last, yesterday, and we received a presentation on the various programs through the COG, Council of Governments, and just a lot of resources out there. One of the, for example, one of the most exciting is there a Transition Out of Poverty program, which if you make less than 150% of the federal poverty rate, you're eligible for this program, and you get a lot of support in education, job training, so forth and so on. And so just, there's amazing programs that they have going on over there.
DIC didn't meet this month. We'll meet next week.
Education Foundation, two of our cooler events coming up, two of their cooler events. One is the anniversary, or the donor reception. It is the 25th anniversary of the donor reception, so that's Tuesday, March 26th, at the George. Opportunity to thank all the donors that contribute to the Education Foundation and all the great things that allows us to do for our kids. And then Senior Hall of Fame Dinner is Wednesday, April 3rd, honoring 60 outstanding students and their chosen educators, another great event if you are able to attend.
Anything else? I know with spring break, it kind of threw things off, so. Dr. Harkrider.
Yeah, we just got back from spring break. I think it was one of those breaks that's kind of odd. It feels like it goes really fast, but then it feels like it's been three or four weeks since we've been back. So it's good to get back. Just want to brag a little bit on our ag programs. At both high schools, have had a great spring at multiple shows, coming back with lots of awards and celebrations, the most recent Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, and then our own county fair is upcoming. I believe it starts, has already started this week. Soccer playoffs are on the horizon. Three out of our four soccer programs at our high schools are in the playoffs. Very excited about that. Our two teams at Consolidated High School both won district championships, and I believe College Station High boys finished second, so we're expecting great things from those three as they get started, I believe, next Tuesday. I think they may have a warm-up game or two this week. It's an odd mix how the UIL does this. They had technically two weeks off. They were off at spring break, off again. As a former coach, I don't think I would like that very much unless you got some girls and boys that are injured and need some time to heal up, but I think we'll be well-rested and ready to go for the soccer playoffs. Spring sports are in full go, baseball, softball, track, tennis, golf. We've got kids and coaches everywhere almost every day of the week, so it's a busy time and it's a great time for our school district. Quick update on our bond, 2024. We've had some questions. We hadn't heard anything about our bond. That's by design. We stayed away from our campaigning and getting our information out during the primary elections because it is confusing for voters, because our election day is not until May 4th. So we have been working with our team, and Austin and our bond team has been working hard behind the scenes to get our bond webpage ready to go, our messaging campaign and videos with Austin and Ezra. They've done a wonderful job. You'll see that information start trickling out. I think the website will be up, is it this week, Austin? Be up this week, and then messaging starting next week. So we're excited to get our information out in the community of really what the bond projects are about. It's a repeat from Proposition C and D in November. There's kind of some key phrases that we're trying to concentrate on to better inform our community of why these are needs. It's safety, functional, and cost-effective to existing facilities, and so that information will be a, not a one-hit sort of deal. It'll be a consistent messaging program for the next six weeks as we lead up to early voting, which begins on April 22nd. And that's all I have.
All right. That'll bring us to item E, Hearing of Citizens. I have two. Any others? Okay. During this time, public comments are welcome. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Please complete the note card, give it to the executive assistant. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone, regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. Board asks that those addressing the board refrain from derogatory comments. Our first card is Piper and Ellie Coleman. We're going to use this microphone right up here. I guess let me preface this because I sometimes forget. Y'all's topic is CSISD/CTE/Animal Science Proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellie Coleman.
And my name is Piper Coleman.
We live at 2718 Wolfshire Lane, College Station, Texas 77845. We currently attend Wilburn Middle School's eighth graders. We are very excited and eager to attend College Station High School next year as freshmen. However, we were disappointed to learn we'd have to choose between our passion for caring for animals and attending College Station High School. We knew from a young age we wanted to pursue a career in animal sciences. We were thrilled to learn about CSISD's Career in Technology or CTE Program, especially the animal science path and the Agriculture, Food, and Natural Resources Program, with the potential to earn a certificate towards our goal in this field. The CTE program is offered at A&amp;M Consolidated High School starting our sophomore year, and we know it would help us jumpstart our careers for the future. Sadly, this opportunity may not be possible for us. The biggest issue we're facing, along with many of our peers, is transportation. Because of our parents' work schedules, we rely on the bus to take us to and from school. There are currently no buses that could transport us to Consol and Homagat. Another issue we face is our ability to cope with changing high schools after a year. We were planning to pursue soccer and powerlifting, and we know training with one team and a set of coaches our first year, and having to learn and know an entirely new set of teammates and coaches the next will be extremely challenging. Along that same idea, we will have to learn to navigate a new, very large school, administration team, and a set of peers two years in a row, which would make our focus on academics more challenging as well. Earlier this year, we learned about the new CTE building CSISD was able to build, and we're even more excited to hear that ag classes were the first being held there. Unfortunately, our future animal science classes didn't make the cut. We are proposing, by the end of the 2024-2025 school year, the newly-built CTE building be able to offer the animal science CTE cluster to both College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated High School students. This would double the amount of students who could benefit from these courses and certifications provided. This also gives the school district over a year, which we think is plenty of planning time to figure out details. Without this opportunity to expand the animal science program, we will be unable to complete our goals, and we need to focus our efforts elsewhere to find a new career option. Thank you for considering our proposal. We want you to know that this opportunity means a lot to us and other peers around us.
And next is Laura Osina, and her topic is support of the bond. The bond, sorry.
Hi, my name is Laura Osina. I have two elementary students who attend Forest Ridge Elementary. We love everything about our school and our district, and we are very proud of both. Outside of their classrooms, my two are involved and are active in a variety of all activities all within our community. These activities range from baseball, football, basketball, dance, tumbling, gymnastics, and Ninja Warrior. You name it, we've done it, we've tried it, we love it. All of these help teach our children to be better people, teammates, supporters, communicators, while also instilling dedication and discipline and being a direct link for their overall success, both inside and outside of their classrooms. This May bond aids in the development of facilities that will continue to support our growing community and student base. This bond also helps increase the potential for all students' success and is an investment in the health, safety, and success of all students in College Station ISD. We are excited about our future with our district and the opportunities that it will bring. I want to personally thank the school board for all your support to our district.
That will bring us to item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are item G, I4, J3 through J9, K3, and K4.
Motion approved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Ben. Any further discussion and comment? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That'll bring us to I1, Consider Approval of New Administrator Contract for the Director of Transportation, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Dr. Harkrider, Board of Trustees. I'm here for you to consider a new candidate for Director of Transportation. As you know, Hector Silva announced his retirement in February. I would like to thank you, Hector, for your dedication to CSISD. It's been tremendous. At this time, I would like to tell you a little bit about our candidate that we are recommending. She comes to us with nine years of experience in transportation, four and a half of years as a director of transportation, has experience with TransFinder, which is a school bus tracking system that allows you to be safe and effective with transporting students. It is a data management system that we are looking into at CSISD, and she has that experience with implementing that with her, with staff. She is currently serving over 1,000 more riders than we currently serve here in College Station ISD, so that experience also comes with 154 miles that she manages with the fleet and the drivers. She is certified as an inspector. She is certified as a bus driver instructor, and she currently holds supervisory level in transportation management. We would like to recommend Mrs. Shannon Callthorpe from Willis ISD as a new member of our team in College Station ISD.
Motion approved as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker. Any further discussion, questions, comment? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations and welcome.
And as we, go ahead, sir.
Shannon, would you like to say anything? She probably doesn't, but you can now. It's okay.
I'm really excited for the opportunity, so I appreciate it, and I look forward to getting to know all of you. I'm excited. getting to know all of you who are here.
Yeah, very good. And I'll add that, obviously, from what Sarah said about Hector has done a wonderful job here for our school district. He has left our transportation department in tremendous shape. He's going to be a huge asset. He's staying on with us through June for Shannon. I think she will be a seamless part of their team in a very short amount of time, and I think we'll be able to continue Hector's legacy and continue to have a tremendous department that's an asset to our school district. Thank you and welcome aboard.
All right, that'll bring us to item I-2, Consider Approval of New Administrator Contract for Assistant Director of Human Resources as Recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
As you know, Bridget Cooper has taken over as Director of Human Resources, and we would like to be able to consider and recommend an individual that has 13 years of experience in College Station ISD. She is currently Human Resource Generalist at May's Business at Texas University. She comes with not only HR experience, but also business office experience. She held lead position management specialist and slash payroll specialist in CSISD and also the bookkeeper at College Station High School. Is currently certified Texas School Business Specialist, and we would like to recommend Ms. Danielle Valades for the Assistant Director of Human Resources.
I think everyone just voted. Motion approved as presented.
I second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Iggy. Any further comments, questions, concerns? And all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Welcome home.
I do believe, Danielle, you're the first person I've heard that brought their own fan club, so congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I'm just really kind of be back home, and I'm looking forward to take the opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you.
That'll bring us to item I-3, Consider Approval of the Addition of One Band Director for Each Comprehensive High School as Recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
This recommendation doesn't come without heavy consideration for several years. Back in 2020, the conversation began of the needs of our band programs. Next year, the projections are going to be around 400 students at both comprehensive high schools. What we have to consider is not only the level of excellence that they're currently thriving at with back-to-back UIL state marching competition, we also have to consider their safety. They are outside, their practice is not climate-controlled. They perform at a high level. And so not only to ensure the high expectations of excellence, but also the safety of our students. We want to be able to recommend one additional band director for each comprehensive high school. Our current staffing model does not compare, or it's not comparable, to other 5A band programs. They are looking at three to possibly, and even four, band directors per program. We currently have two at each comprehensive high school. And for the students, for the safety of students, for the performance level, we are asking that you consider one band director at each comprehensive high school.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Simmons, second by Dr. Payne. Further questions?
Yeah, actually, I do want to ask a question. I want to first say, I mean, I recognize the need and also certainly recognize the success of the programs, right? And part of that success has led to the programs growing. And I think it was just the last meeting where, when I even said, I am, I love when we can have more of our kids involved in those types of programs, right? So I'm excited to see the growth and recognize the need. But we also just came off of a tight budget discussion in our workshop about looking at how, you know, we're really suffering in funding from the state. And so I guess the question is, these are, these are new positions as opposed to the others we just, you know, how are we able to fit that into our budget? I mean, I'm sure you've done it, but I think a little explanation of how that's happened.
Yes, ma'am. I think when you look at how we are staffing for next year, we have to look at resignations coming in, retirements coming in. We have to look at direct impact of students and the safety of students. Even though the shortfalls from the state are providing a very difficult situation for us as public school providers, we don't cut opportunities because of what they're doing to us. So I think that as we go through weekly projections, Amy's done a fabulous job giving weekly updates, it doesn't come without tremendous conversations about what do we do for students? Because there's never going to be easy decisions made when you're talking about the financial shortfalls. But yes, ma'am, as we consider staffing for next year, we have to look at class sizes. Are there staff members or are there, are we overstaffed at campuses? Are we overstaffed in departments? We have to look at actual data and numbers. That's based off 100% the evidence that comes from how we track personnel and staffing. So I appreciate, it's not something that we have an end game, and there's not an answer to right now because the projections are ongoing. It's ever-changing with information coming from TEA and surprises that they like to kind of put on us. And as we do the budget projections for each department, for each campus, we have to be able to put student safety first, and I think that's what we're doing with this decision.
Yeah, and in the end, numbers drive staffing, you know, and where we are budgeting for next year, our goal is not to be a net zero. We could get to a net zero pretty quickly and just cut staff members. We could cut 50 to 100 positions, and yeah, if we would pass a budget, that would not be a deficit budget. However, that would not be doing what's best for kids and not doing what's right by our staff. I think what we're going to do in an evaluation process is evaluate how we're spending money as a whole in every single area right now and take resources, and they may be used in a different way. They may be moved to open classroom spots. You know, the band program staffing drives the success of the program, the staffing shortage that's obviously pretty glaring there, that we feel like that's more important right now. And we've got other areas that we're going to be able to cut back and save some money.
And I appreciate that. I mean, because I, yeah, like I said, I recognize the need. The numbers drive that need, so, but it does mean cutting other places, I mean, so.
And you just said 400 members per band?
No, it's combined, close to 400 students that will be in our programs.
Okay, so if we're talking 200, let's say we split them evenly, we got 200 per, and we've got two instructors now.
Yes, sir.
And we don't really have any other programs where anyone manages 100 kids, correct? Right, so the need is obviously there. And I want to thank, you mentioned 2020 and the effort that it's taken from band parents that aren't even going to benefit from this anymore, that started this conversation years ago.
Yes.
And how well our bands have continued to do and perform. So I think this is tremendous investment by our school district to do the right thing and take care of kids.
I was a little bit shocked, I was a little bit shocked, to be honest, when, you know, I found out there were only two band directors for basically 10% of each high school population almost. So this is, you know, we've, again, we've got to be fiscally responsible, but this is, this is having 200 kids supervised by two individuals on band trips, on late-night trips, getting back from football games, so forth and so on. This is just, I think it's just an absolute necessity.
Ms. Colesby, I liked your justification and logic that it's excellence, and we want to strive for excellence at CSISD, we want to reward excellence because we have an obligation, not just to students and parents, but to taxpayers. They expect a quality product. And if we're doing good with what we got, and I think it also underscores the need for the bond, we've got some catching up to do on a facilities and a staffing. And so making this hard, it's a bad year to do it, but I think we're all on board that it's necessary. So I appreciate that perspective, maintain that excellence.
What they're doing understaffed is tremendous. What our, what our athletes are doing with the facilities they have is tremendous. Imagine if the playing field's even.
It really is. And so I agree, again, I certainly recognize the need. The other piece of this, though, like I said, I think it's a part of our program and curriculum that we need to continue to have more kids involved in, but it's also, if I understand correctly, it's not something we get any weighted funding for. We don't get extra funding for having necessarily more kids in band.
No, ma'am. We sure wish we did.
And I'll just, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, just to add on to what Mr. Decker said, you know, in regard to the bond, this is another example how the bond, in particular, what is going to be in May, keeps, gets classified as an athletics bond. But the simple fact of the matter is, is that, you know, our stadiums are used for fine arts like band, the dance team, so forth and so on. And so it's not just a football stadium that gets used six, seven times a year. It is, or JV games, but you know what I'm saying? So it is, you know, that, that area of our comprehensive high schools is just used by so many of our students, such a large percentage, that it's definitely more than just athletics.
I would like to recognize our band directors that are in the audience for your work. If you are, please stand if you are a current band director in the CSISD. Thank you for the work that you've done, and thank you for being advocates for kids. Mr. Iggs, my thank you goes to you as well.
One last thing as well. We're bringing this to you earlier. Obviously, we've got a lot of work that we'll do throughout the rest of the summer on the budgeting process. The reason it's earlier versus later is a position, is a position, is strategically coming in my mind this early so our band programs can actively get out and recruit the best person for their fit. You wait too long in the process, and then you're hiring a body that may or may not be the right fit. So it's important to get the right fit for the continuity of the program, that it's not a one-year hire, they're here with us hopefully for many years.
I think this will also, we talk about teacher retention all the time. We don't want to burn these guys out, so giving them more support will really help and just help the programs keep continuing.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That'll bring us to item J-1, Consider An Act on a Resolution Expressing Official Intent to Reimburse Costs of Projects with Future Bond Proceeds. Ms. Draus.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. So before you, you have a resolution, as mentioned, expressing official intent to reimburse costs of projects with future bond funds. We've brought these to you previously. This one, the intent would be hopefully for a successful May 2024 bond that's coming up. You'll hear more details about the project a little bit later in the agenda, but this particular project, due to the condition of the tracks, is essential that we start repairs on this this summer so that it can be used the next school year. So with this resolution under IRS and Treasury regulations, if you so approve, we can start that project with the intent of reimbursing ourselves up to 18 months after this project is completed, but not to exceed three years. And so we can hold this kind of loan money to a future bond in essence.
Am I correct in understanding, based on the presentations we've had about the condition of the tracks, regardless whether the, and Mr. Semax' memo, regardless of whether the bond, we have to resurface tracks? So this is just administrative, so we can kind of post facto?
Right. So, I mean, we even, we had this discussion really in December and January when we knew the results of the November bond, and it came, okay, the immediate thing that we need to address are these tracks and how are we going to go about it? Because, you know, we're postponing events and they're having to just use a portion of the track right now for practices. So we were having these discussions in January of how we might proceed with getting this repair done.
It's also a timing issue. The election's not until May the 4th. They've got to get started to get the tracks completed before the beginning of football season. So it's a timing issue. If we were to wait until then, we do not have enough time to get out for bid all the different specs in order to meet the timelines to get it completed in time. This will allow us to jumpstart that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Dr. Payne. Further comment, questions?
I just have a question and then a comment. So obviously, if the bond fails, this will need to come out of the general fund?
It would, hopefully temporarily. So we would have 18 months from the time that it completed to pass a bond and sell one, up to, up to three years. So it, it could be even a bond after May 2024 as well.
And, you know, I know one of the questions that will come up is, well, why aren't we paying for this as regular maintenance as opposed to, you know, a capital improvement? And so I just, you know, for folks who might have that question, I would just urge you, if you didn't, didn't see the workshop earlier today, to go back and watch that as there's this discussion about our maintenance and operations budget, state funding, so forth and so on, and the, the, the kind of the, and I have full, just for the record, I have full confidence in our current administration that, I won't put words in Dr. Harkrider's mouth, but they are looking at every nook and cranny as far as possible savings in our, our M&amp;O budget. But it's, there's just, there's no money in the M&amp;O budget to make these repairs at this point, right?
That's correct.
And I see Mr. Starnes is here, just so we can make the track, new tracks last longer. You can run the other direction. They don't really, it'll extend the life. Left turn.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Bring us to item J-2, Consider Approval of the Change of Funding for Security Vestibule at AMCHS in the Amount of $79,175 awarded to Rava Construction for 21 Bond Funds to the 2325 School Safety Enhancement Enhancement Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. So in March of 2023, you as a Board of Trustees approved a contract to Rava Construction for what we were calling Phase Two of renovations to A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Part of that renovation was improvements to the security vestibule. Since that time, this fall, we were awarded a little over $4.8 million in safety grant funds that had to be used, has to be used towards the recommendation, the safety recommendations that came out. Security vestibules is one of those. A unique thing about this particular grant is it is retroactive to June of 2022. So just like in the general fund, we're trying to make use of every dollar that we have, we're also doing that with our bond funds, knowing that if we can stretch them farther for other projects. So we had our contractor go through that particular contract, break out the security vestibule piece, and I would like to move that to the safety and security grant funds upon your approval. Since you did approve the original funding, I need the approval to move it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ben, second by Mr. Decker. Further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Bring us to item K-1, Consider A Contract Award for the Track Resurfacing of Consol and CSHS to Helis Construction using future bond funds in the amount not to exceed $653,791. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Harkrider, Mr. Horak, members of the board. This is a follow-up to Agenda Item J-1, the repayment resolution. I'm glad Mrs. Draus was up here to answer all the tough funding questions so I wouldn't have to catch those. So this is for the running track athletic surfacing at both of our comprehensive high schools, at Consol High School and CSHS. And the long and short of it is, these, these tracks have outlasted their warranty periods. They're worn, peeling up pieces of track, they've no longer, they are no longer safe to host track meets for high school students any longer. So to address that, proposals were solicited from Paragon Sports and Helis Construction for these two-track resurfacing projects. Received those on March 4th, 2024. I reviewed that along with Assistant Director of Facilities Rene Ramirez, and you can please see the attached proposals for your reference if you want to dig any of those details. Helis Construction did have the lowest price for the full scope desired, and so they are the recommended vendor for this work. Helis Construction is a buyboard vendor that we've used many times in the past with great success, and coincidentally, they're the ones who replaced the artificial turf on both of these fields about three years ago. both of these fields about three years ago. Their proposal for $628,791 includes demolition and removal of the old existing rubber athletic servicing, the inspection of the base asphalt layer, installation of the new permeable paved mat system, as well as a structural spray polyurethane surfacing system, and of course, all of the striping and markings as required for UIL regulations. Their proposal also includes some minor asphalt repair over at Consol High School. So it is recommended that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees consider approval of a contract to Helus Construction for $628,791 to replace the running track athletic surfacing at A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School, and an additional $25,000 for contingency funding, for a total of $653,791, utilizing general fund or general fund with reimbursement from future bond funds. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Can you, like, I fully support replacing both tracks, I've seen them both, they're awful. What's the average life of a track, and how old are those two tracks? And the company we're proposing giving the contract to, have they done the current work on any of those tracks?
Okay, couple of questions, I'll see if I can catch them all here. So first of all, they usually last about eight years, which is exactly why that's a typical warranty period. It's always amazing to me that eight years and a few months, they start peeling up a lot faster. So they've got this down to a science. So they usually last about then. These tracks are about 10 years old. The one over College Station High School is 12 years old. It's original to the school, so it's beyond time. And we've had them and Paragon Sports actually come over and do some minor patchwork on it, but it's beyond what we can patch at this point. Did that catch them all? I think it did.
Motion approved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Ege. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And that brings us to K two, consider award of a contract to Intex Sales for the purchase and installation of HVAC equipment at AMCHS in the amount not to exceed $2,265,311.68 using 21 bond funds. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Harkrider, Mr. Horak, members of the board. Back in November of 2021, College Station ISD voters passed a bond issue for $78.125 million for renovations to district facilities and other items. I always want to just take a moment to say thank you to the voters of College Station for passing this bond and making these projects, such as this one, a possibility for us. So within that bond package, of course, was funding for deferred maintenance items at several campuses across the school district. One of the more significant needs than has been for many years was for mechanical equipment replacement at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. This includes a wide range of air conditioning-related components within the campus, most of which are many, many years beyond their expected lifecycle. Intex Sales and Services provided the attached proposals for the majority of this work, as these are what's referred to as one-for-one replacements. They don't need any additional engineering or anything, it's replacing one old unit and putting a new one in, in its place. This accounts for approximately 70% of the identified needs on that campus. And I have attached their proposal for your reference, I know some of you like those details, there's all kinds of maps and color photos of exactly where all of the components are going to be located, so all of that information is right there for you if you need it. Intex Sales and Services is a purchasing cooperative member of buyboard, and we have used them for projects like this several times over the years with great success. They have an excellent record with us for completing projects on time, under budget, and with very, very good quality. Specifically, this work would cover 13 rooftop air conditioning units that are in stock, seven outside air rooftop units that are long lead time items. Going into the building, we've got 45 what's referred to as a fan coil unit, these are the smaller units that are up in the above-ceiling spaces. These are all in the science wing of Consol High School. And finally, this is a replacement of seven chilled water pumps and six hot water pumps that support the whole system. This is a chilled water system that pumps water throughout the building to provide the cooling. The old equipment that we're replacing is between 25 and 40 years old, it's amazing that some of it is still running, it's just testament to our maintenance guys how they keep this stuff cobbled together and keep running year after year. But these old systems have become very difficult and expensive to maintain, and a lot of them still actually have old R22 refrigerant, which is very expensive to replace as well. A significant portion of this work would be happening over the summer of '24, but with the long lead items, for sure, some of these would be pushing into the fall semester that we'll have to just coordinate with Gwen Elder and the staff over on the campus to minimize impact on her operations. I do have a breakout of pricing on the second page of the memo, I'm not going to read all of those, but the grand total is $2265,311.68. So it is recommended that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees consider approval of a contract to Intex Sales and Service in the amount of $2265,311.68 for mechanical equipment replacement at A&amp;M Consolidated High School utilizing 2021 bond funds. And with that, love to answer any questions you might have.
Motion approved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Hall, just for the benefit of anybody watching, I know one of the things that we as a board and the administration, we use terminology that maybe other people aren't familiar with. So when you say buyboard, what exactly is that?
Thank you for asking. A buyboard is a purchasing cooperative, they have pre-negotiated pricing that school districts are allowed to use them without having to go, legally having to go out and bid the process out and get bids from several different vendors. We are allowed to do this, and it really streamlines the process when we're allowed to do that. So a buyboard is, I mention that a lot because that is one that College Station ISD recognizes, and we use a vast number of different vendors for different projects that are all buyboard members.
And also, yeah, there's also checks and balances with the buyboards to make sure those numbers are within a certain threshold.
Just, I don't have any questions, because you did provide lots of good information, but just a comment, kind of follows up on Mr. Ben's comment from the previous item, is just, to me, this is an example, it's a lot of money, right? It's $2.2 million, but it's also a perfect example of why we have to have bonds and have to spend money on our existing facilities, right? I mean, we have, I get amazed that these systems have lasted for 25 to 40.
They've been there as long as Heather was in high school, when Heather was there. I'm just telling you, you, Hester, me, they've been there since then, I'll just call it out.
So, one, obviously, we're taking advantage of our, you know, using our resources wisely, but they also cost a whole lot of money to replace and to keep up our 19 schools, so, I mean.
I wonder what this would have costed five years ago, probably cheaper.
Well.
The longer we wait, prices go up, is that what I'm hearing? Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I thought, I thought that was, but yeah, no, I'm with you, 100% agree. That's, when I was reading through the proposal, and I saw that the units have been there 25 to 40 years, and then I realized how old I was, and wow. It is. It's just, I mean, yeah, it's part of the process, it's frustrating, it shows how behind, I guess, getting everything caught up, and that's where we're at, so.
And I don't even consider it necessarily behind, I mean, but it is ongoing expenses, you know, just like if you're a homeowner, we own a lot of, we own a lot of assets as a district, and it's our responsibility to keep them up. It's expensive.
And it also highlights, oh, sorry, it also highlights when we're putting together a bond package and we put something out there called deferred maintenance, and it doesn't sound very exciting, but now we look and we see, well, hey, it's going to go, you know, replace AC units on one of our high schools, that's really important, so.
It's pretty exciting to the maintenance guys. I think it's safe to say, we got all the good out of those, so.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Now bring us to item L one, executive session. The board will meet in executive session to discuss security and safety updates. Executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. Closed meeting. Exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act is set forth in Section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. Thank y'all, welcome back from spring break. Nine weeks left. All right, we're back in open sessions, and that will adjourn us.